I have six thirty, so I would like to call this quarter, the Green Development Commission to order. Could we stand and say what you read your face?
What religion do you apply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. By Adam, would you get enough call roll, please?
Ken Dornic?
Yes.
Rick Fayette?
Yes.
Shannon McBoe?
Yes.
Darryl Pollan?
Yes, here.
Diane McHenry is here. David White?
Present.
Thank you. And I was going to, we've got a couple things going on tonight. The next thing that's on the agenda is to approve the minutes for both the May twenty-ninth and the July third meetings. We didn't approve the May twenty-ninth at the last meeting because we didn't have everybody here that had been at that meeting to approve them. And remember, we didn't feel like we should go ahead and approve those. So has everybody had a chance to look over the May twenty-ninth minutes? And does anybody want to make any comments or adjustments to that? Okay. And the same on the July third meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look those over? If I don't hear any suggestions on that, we'll let them stand. Can I hear a motion to approve those two sets of meeting minutes?
I'd like to approve the May twenty-ninth meeting minutes. I was not here on July third, so I would like to make a motion to approve May twenty-ninth minutes.
Can I hear a second to approve May twenty-ninth?
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor, say my last name, I.
Aye.
As opposed to? Thank you. And then let's do the same for the July third meeting. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the July third minutes. Does it stand?
I'll make a motion to approve the July third.
Thank you. And a second. Thank you. And all those in favor, please say my last name, I.
My last name.
Thank you. You opposed? Thank you. Okay, at this point, I would like to recess the regular meeting and we're going to open to the public meetings or public comment on Resolution two thousand thirteen dash one.
Do you need a motion to close the meeting?
You need to do that first?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second then?
All second.
Thank you. Folks in favor, say my last name, I.
Aye.
Thank you.
Vote.
Thank you. So now we'll open it to the public meeting. We have folks that would like to address the resolution. Comments about it?
That's, can, can I ask you to please explain what the resolution is for some of the people that haven't been attending the meeting?
Yeah. The resolution pertains to the development of the expanded TIFF area that runs from basically behind Shillings across four twenty-one. It's an area that we have tipped, that's an expansion of the original area, and our intent is to hopefully develop that area for future growth. Part of the resolution pertains to the development of that area, the infrastructure in that area. There are a number of other projects involved in that resolution. And that resolution is, well, that's available to the public right now. It pertains to, thank you. There's a, a number of projects on here, many different projects that pertain, as I said, to the development of Veterans Way, phases one, A, B, and C. There's a Waterman Loop, which is another project involved in that. Possible, there's construction of a lift station that's also tied in there. Phase two is construction of a three-lane curb in Gutter Street for an extension of the original Veterans Way project. And this is Veterans Way Phase three. There's also a section in here, a project for the reconstruction of Moscow Road. There's a section for replacement of about four hundred feet of sanitary sewer on Lincoln Street and North Montgomery Road sanitary sewer, about eleven hundred feet there. These are projects that, and if I may, just so I can, I'll take a rest a second. The way that these were developed is we formed a steering committee with the help of a number of city officials and outlined projects that we wanted to work on over the next number of years to help the development of the city and our infrastructure and our economic development. And so that's basically what the resolution is. It's, it's a wish list. It's, I guess, another way to put it. It's things that, that we believe need to be done. The original project list is probably fifteen years old, twenty years old, and the majority of those projects on that list were accomplished, now have been accomplished. A lot of them were accomplished with the completion of Lincoln Street and some of the infrastructure that was in place with that. There were two or three projects that were on the original fifteen, twenty-year-old list that had not been addressed. And again, talking to our department heads in the city, we decided that we would include some of them on here. The North Montgomery Road sanitary sewer is an example of that. So that's basically what that is.
Thank you, Ken, for explaining that. And I think there's some of the property owners here that, you know, needed to understand that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. This list is not, is this public? Is it?
The declaratory resolution has been made available in the engineering, engineering office pursuant to the notice as well as the supplemental point. It's also been a record, public record that it's available.
So if anybody want, would like a copy of that, it is available. Okay, we're not, we're not trying to hide anything. We're trying to be very bug bored and everything. So if there's any questions at all, we have them here. There's copies that's available. And if you folks have any questions as to what we're doing, please feel free to ask, either now or all day long. If I can answer, I would be glad to. We've been working on the TIFF committee, the redevelopment committee for a number of years, and I think we're all pretty proud of the way that Lincoln Street came out. We developed that, and is that any bonding involved on that? Basically paid cash for it for a number of reasons, because of the economy currently and because we're fortunate to have somebody put back. So we want to try to do the same thing again. I know we'll have to do some bonding on this, it's obvious, there's a lot of money here. But with, that's the reason we broke it into phases and to take steps. We're not going to bite off the wall over one time and take steps that makes sense to us. So that said, any questions from anybody in the audience? Could I ask you to approach the podium and identify yourself, please?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Donna Stevens. And let me just state that I really wish more residents were here. And I, so that kind of leads me to my first question, and I kind of know the answer, but when these meetings are posted, is it or is it not in the back of the paper in that little tiny fine print where most people don't pay attention to it? Most, you know, they just kind of look at it and go, oh, and bypass it.
All meeting notifications for not only ours, but all, all public meetings are posted in this paper.
But my question is, they're not out on the front page where they should be? I mean, and they should be in great big print. Folks, you need to come to this meeting because this affects you.
That's something you probably need to address in Greensburg daily much more.
Okay, I can do that. And you were mentioning this was a wish list, you know, some of this stuff that's been going on for years. Because I was going to ask, whose brainchild was this? And there again, and why are we calling it the Veterans Parkway Road?
Does that mean that we came up with the, with the road?
Well, it, it's just, you know, to me, it just kind of lets people believe that, you know, we're honoring the veterans, and I don't think veterans really have anything to do with it, but, you know, there's just things I see going on in our federal government they give names to try to gain, you know, support for, and I'm just hoping this isn't the case here. One of the big things is, I'd like to know how many property owners are being impacted by this road?
There's a list of properties that are involved, and as you say, impacted. They'll be impacted in the fact that their land is for sale, not to the city, but it's for sale to a developer. So impacted in a positive way, I would think.
So they're going to have the choice whether or not they want to sell their land, and it's not going to be taken from them by eminent domain, which would be the, what would happen if the airport expansion would go.
At this point, we see no reason to do that.
Okay. So these folks would have, say, yes, I'll do this, no, I won't. And it, and once that decision is made, someone's not going to come back to them and say, oh, well, we're going to take your property anyway because six other property owners have said yes, and you're the only holdout.
At this point, I don't see any reason why that would happen.
Okay.
Miss Stevens, excuse me, there is a process, just like on, on Lincoln Street, where the city will make offers for the land. And then, of course, it comes down to negotiations, just like any other project would. Of course, in the domain could come into the picture, that's inevitable with any type of project that you endeavor.
True.
So I, I think to, to answer your question, just to say, no, we can't say that.
Well, this is what bothers me, because I have a three-acre field behind my home, and I live on Park Road. And I pay taxes on it. I purchased that ground, and I don't want anyone ever coming to me, you know, saying, well, I'd like to purchase your ground for whatever reason, and then if I say, no, it's not for sale, and then coming to me and saying, well, we're going to take it from you anyway because we have to, we, we have something we want to do. That's not fair to land on anybody. I don't care who you are. And anybody that, you know, that has, you know, has to put up with that, you know, there's, there's really something wrong when you own property and you can't keep it because somebody else has a wish list that they want to fulfill. And as I said, I'm seeing in our federal government so much of this happening that I want to make sure that I can help stop it at the local level, if at all possible. You know, if I think it's a worthwhile project, I'm all for it. And this is only the third meeting I've attended, and as I said, I look around the room and I see a lot of people here, but they're not the people that need to be here. They're the heads of departments. You know, that's fine, they're here, but the people that really need to be here aren't. And there again, it goes back to, they don't know because they're uninformed. And that's where I'm going to be real informed and probably be one of your worst nightmares, gentlemen and ladies, because I'm tired. I'm tired of going to work and having local, state, and federal come after my paycheck time and time again because they all have a wish list from the top down to this level, and it needs to stop. Now, I'll continue, since I've said my piece. Do we have any major stores, companies that have said they'll, they'll come to Greensburg if we do this, this road?
No. At this point, we don't have any commitment to anybody.
So we're just going to put a road in and it's just, just a road?
We're going to develop the property and the infrastructure.
Is this going to benefit, I mean, the businesses? I mean, if we, if we don't have anybody coming to build along this, you know, the movie, Build It, and they would come, well, that's not always true. Because Honda built, and we were told, oh, they're going to come in droves, we're going to have more jobs, we're going to have this. That hasn't happened.
Okay. The way that stores, businesses move into an area is they want to have an infrastructure in place. If a big box store wants to come in, they're not going to wait three years for us to put a road in and infrastructure. They want to have it there. Use the, the business park up in Shelbyville as an example. They put in their infrastructure and it sat because you probably six months per year you put the first business show up there. And then once it did, it started to, to develop from there.
So with the amount of, what amount of traffic flow will be increased, you know, and does this really warrant this new road? I mean...
We can't, we can't develop the area unless there's a road.
Well, this is true, but I know generally, you know, people are going out here and, and they're, they're pulling their statistics and their facts because you've got to have something to base it on. You just can't say, oh, we're going to build this road, and only maybe three cars will drive down in a day's time. I mean, you, you have to know that it's going to be either heavily traveled, lightly traveled. As I said, I'm not an engineer, but I would think there would be something there that, you know, that you're going to look for to say, oh, well, this is, or this is going to help alleviate congestion, you know, here or here. I mean, if we're going to spend money, there's, there's a few more projects that I can talk to you about that I think that we could be doing, you know, that would benefit this town, but there again, that's not my call. And it was stated by Gary Murray Monday night at the city meeting of Endot, that Endot would not be taking any new projects before 2018. So if this is true, you know, why are we doing this? I mean, I, I don't, I can't see where we're going to start something that we can't finish.
Now, as I mentioned before, and you said you did at some of our previous meetings, we've discussed it then, our intention is to fund the first phase of that ourselves. And with that, when that's completed, and Endot has opened themselves up for more projects, we will use our investment in that first phase to show that we're interested in doing what we need to do to get the rest of that done.
Okay, so we're, so we're going to, so when you say the first phase, what is the first, what does the first phase consist of?
It's the construction of a three-lane curb in Gutter Street, a multi-use path on one side of, of four twenty-one, the existing drive cut in the north side of the road. And it runs, and then it's going to run east from there, about thirty-seven hundred and fifty feet to Carver Street.
So this doesn't even, even get started on the road itself? I mean, I'm just trying to...
Go pick it up off of four twenty-one and run thirty-seven hundred feet east from there.
So it's a thirty-seven hundred foot piece of road initially?
That's correct. So we'll connect to Carver Street?
Then we'll connect to Carver Street.
Okay. I think, okay, I, there is one. Is there going to be a cul-de-sac in the plans when they're drawn up?
We're in a place near that at this point, because I can't answer my question. At this point, I believe it's going to be a three-lane, multi-perpetual road.
Okay. And in phase one, what's the proposed cost for, do you have that as far as each phase?
Nine million nine hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars for phase one.
So phase one, for a thirty-seven hundred foot road, is over nine million dollars?
It's closer to a mile, Ken. Closer to a mile.
That's a pretty expensive mile. Well, I, after, after hearing that, I really need to say, oh, folks, you need to ask me questions.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think we're just here to listen.
Okay, and that's fine, that's great, and...
Because we don't know what to ask since we haven't been given a lot of information.
I understand that. And I, I mean, if I'm sitting here, I have to say a question. Believe me, if there's any questions, please, my phone number is in the book.
Well, the only thing of it is, your wish list, I've asked Santa Claus for a lot of things and haven't gotten them yet, so is your wish list going to be completed?
Well, it's going to be done in phases.
How many, how long is the phases? Because I'm involved in this.
It's going to depend. Ken, I apologize. Can I please ask her to step forward?
I'm sorry.
Fire side, my respect, please.
Here.
I'm sorry, clear record.
My name's Beverly Hahn. I'm a landowner that's going to be involved in this, and we don't know what's going on. I've talked to Jeff and my representative Andrew into that, but other than that, we've heard from no one. We just get bits and pieces, there's nothing in the paper, nothing. We got a drawing that was not readable or recognizable, and I don't want to roll over and play dead. I either want to know what's going on. I am not one of these that I'm haphazard. I have to know the plan. I have to see an end. I'm that way, I always have to have a second plan. Okay, it's going to involve my property. What's it going to look like when you're finished? Because I heard you're going through the middle of it. You know, I need to know those things.
Okay. Gary, can you address that, the location of the road? We're, we're still working on, developing it.
Oh, I know, but...
What Mr. Whitaker gave you was something that could happen. That is not what our portion of that is going to do. It will be on the south side of your property.
No, the south side, it's not taking my property then?
It would involve part of your property, yes.
Exactly. It is, it is.
Beth, it's one of your main concerns, if I understand right, is one of your main concerns, if you go through this process and sign off on it and commit, that you're, one of your big concerns is that you will, you will do your part, but then the project may not come to fruition, and then what have you got? You've got this in your front property, and that's one of your big concerns.
Right.
Is that right?
Yes. It's been there forty years.
So you're just wanting, right, reassurance, because this is your home place, that if this is committed for the first phase, that it won't end there, and you're kind of just left holding the bag, so to speak, with that in the front of your property, right? Is that how you're feeling?
That's how I'm feeling, yes.
Okay.
And if it's all chopped up, what good's that going to do me?
Okay.
Because right now, we ran it out, it's farmed, and I just have to know what's going on.
So those were her big concerns, that maybe for clarity, if anyone could help her with some reassurance or understanding as to what to expect, and a, maybe a potential timeline as to how that traffic flow might, might go in the future, if there is a timeline of expectation at all?
Ken, if I, if I may, can I try to...
Where we currently stand in the process is that this road hasn't been designed. I think that's a misconception that seems to be permeating a lot of the questions we're getting, is that, is that at some point this development commission has sat down and designed a road and said, we know everything about this road. That's not where you stand in the process. Statutorily, the tax increment financing area or an economic development area such as this one, has to by law create a list of what it plans to do with the money that is being generated in the tax increment financing area. So that is called a project list, or it's called a, you know, Ken used the word wish list, but essentially, it's a project list that we identify so that the state and all of the citizens can know, this is what that money is going to be earmarked to use for. So for instance, you would know if it was going to go to the airport, and then everyone who has such a strong opinion on the airport could be here voicing that opinion. This isn't going for the airport. So what happened was, when the first resolution was passed in approximately 2000, there was a list that went along with it. You went through the process of building everything that was on that list and using tax increment financing to do it. Now, you're to a point where that list is completed and you have to get a new list. So essentially, it's like I finished my to-do list for yesterday. So what am I going to do? Well, I'm going to create a to-do list for tomorrow. That's what they're in the process of doing, which is amending the list, which they statutorily have to go through the entire process again in order to be able to say, yes, we gave the public the opportunity to voice their opinion about this list. So to answer your, I don't know that it's possible for anyone in this room to currently answer your question because the road hasn't been designed. What happened was, the steering committee met and said, what do we need next? What's our next to-do list? And they came up with this idea, we need to put in this road, we need to put in this sewer. They ranked it, they came up with an estimate, they put it all together. This body passed that resolution. This resolution then went before the planning commission for the city of Greensburg to see that it complied with the overall comprehensive plan for the city. The planning commission voted unanimously that it did meet the comprehensive plan for the city, and in fact, said that this, this particular road that they're talking about was one that was contemplated when they came up with the comprehensive. It then went before the city council. The city council also unanimously voted on. So there, they, I don't know that there's anyone in this room that can tell, that can answer your question of when will it be done, how much of it will be done, what will happen to it, where exactly will it go, because it hasn't been designed yet.
Okay, I was under misguided information then, so.
Okay.
We have a need to clear an engineering firm.
Can I add something? I was told there'd be engineers here tonight.
There is.
There's a city engineer.
With you being a property owner out there, there is no way that this board is going to let you be uninformed. When it comes down to it, you are going, you're going to be, you're going to be informed.
Well, we haven't been so far.
There's really nothing, really, that's been...
But you're progressing in the meeting, deciding things, and we don't know what's going on.
But, but the decision that they're making is whether or not they can change their list. That's the decision that's in front of this board and the public currently, is can I change my to-do list? That's the question that they're asking, is am I permitted to change my to-do list?
That's not really an answer. I mean, for me, it's not. I know everyone in this room, and we've been out there forty years, and it's our home. But I will do whatever I can do, but I'm not real shot up about giving anybody anything until I would, you know, I need to see papers, I need to go talk to my attorney, I need to do all of that, so.
Absolutely. And this is going to be something that's going to progress, as they've said, we really don't have anything in concrete right now.
Okay.
It's just a list. As Rick said, we haven't hired an engineering firm, but this is, I, I guess this is the first step of notifying you, the property owners, that we are contemplating doing something in that area.
But you guys did notify me. My real estate agent did.
Okay, well, we have an obligation to advertise in the paper, even though it is small.
Yeah, on the front.
I know it's been on the radio station's website. We tried to get on our website, but I, I don't believe anyone has gone door to door or to the property owners yet.
Or a letter.
Not, or a letter. But as I said, there really hasn't been anything to tell yet.
Okay.
And this is just the first step. And, and thank you for coming, because if I was a property owner, I would be here also.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes.
I have a question. I'm not exa...
Could you, could I?
I can talk loud, I'm not, I'm on the microphone. I am on Carver and one fifty north.
Your name, I'm sorry.
Diana Hermitz.
Thank you.
And I am on Carver and one fifty north. And so I would like that, what's the word I want to use, you know, could I be informed also? Because if you're going to connect Carver to this, there's going to be a lot of traffic beside my house, that when you contact Beth, could you contact a few of the people that are on one fifty that it's going to affect?
That should be part of the process.
It will be part of the process. When we choose an engineer, there will be public meetings where we bring drawings out and we talk to people that are affected.
See, I think of that...
See, I think of that, if it's not there yet.
I mean, it's not actually going to take my property, but I would like to be informed.
It's going to impact.
As I, you know, I have my next door neighbor, she, all of us, you know, within that area, I think should be informed, at least by a letter.
Absolutely. And we're just so early in the process, and we're not trying to be evasive at all. I think Chris said it very clearly, we're just, we're just very early in the process, nothing's been designed. We have some, some...
Aerial photographs.
Aerial photographs, I think that's what's going on.
Okay, I've talked to Gary, he's kind of, he's giving me a map and kind of said stuff to me.
You know, we've been working on those for...
Long time.
Yeah, and we, and we keep tweaking and doing this, but we need to, we need to move forward on the process and hire that engineering firm, and then, then we can, then we can come up with the schematics and have a better idea. You know, if I were in your positions, I'd be sitting here.
You'd be here too. You know, kind of upset that they're not being informed, and you know, it's like a roundabout way, kind of like, you know, I don't get the paper anymore, so I guess I'm going to have to rely on somebody, I'm sorry. I guess I'm going to have to rely on somebody.
W T R A.
Do what?
W T R A.
Uh, W T R A.
Sandy's right there, she'd be glad.
Okay.
But, no, and I understand, we just, and I hope you understand, we're not trying to hide anything at all, we're just very, very early in the process. Okay, and yes, that's part of the process, you...
We will be informed.
Ken, you might state that this is a regularly held monthly, normally at...
It's usually the last Wednesday of August.
Well, I didn't realize that you were starting to talk about this, and so I don't come here regularly.
I understand. You know, we've had the meeting in forever, on the last Wednesday of August, and up until recently, it was too, too aggressively entered, and now that we've got that, that we're working on the next phase of it, but, yeah.
I mean, I've been here for, been here for thirty years, and when I first got married, my husband to me out there, and I thought, this is the babies, there was nothing. So I have seen a lot of changes, you know, some good, some not so good, in thirty years. And so I'm just concerned about this, so, you know, that's all I need, I just wanted to get a hot box for a little bit, so now I'm going to get, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to get another hot box?
Last but not least. Gary Herbert, resident on North Carver Street. You know, TIFF area, a lot of people don't understand, TIFF area, money going to be spent in that area, from tax revenue from that area. That's why you can't take and spend money all over town. But this has been kind of in the planning for several years. If you remember, Ken, oh sure you do, it was called the Freeland Road Project, and this is kind of part of it, and it was determined that really Freeland Road wasn't a good outlet to rent up for it. You know, and the ten million dollars, that includes a lot, not just a slab of asphalt, curbing, drainage, the utilities, engineering, you know, what caused and involved there. And I understand Mr. and Mrs. Hahn's concerns. Gary Murray and I met with Mr. and Mrs. Hahn, it's been a few months ago.
We had a meeting with the Shombers.
No, we didn't meet with us.
When did we meet?
Oh, no, we didn't meet with, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Hahn, that's when Jeff, Matt went with Jeff, but we did meet with Mr. and Mrs. Shombers about a month ago now, and it was a positive meeting, there, I believe, support what you're wanting to do, your list. The reason we hadn't contacted anyone, because we've kind of get a feel for everything, to see where the road could possibly be without affecting the people the least possible. You know, at one time, I consider, we might consider 150 being part of the road, but for safety, and nothing is in concrete, but it looks like it would be moved over to the north from 150, allow 150 to be a frontage road, for safety, so if you want to hold back out on a three-lane road, I'd say everything, nothing's declined. And you know, from the information that I have gathered from economic development people in different states, is that if you build in a most likely area, the infrastructure, people will utilize it, businesses will utilize it, which in turn, after when the sundown period comes, all the different taxing entities will prosper from those revenues, help stabilize the tax base. But anytime that anybody who's a citizen of Greensburg or the county has a question, all they can do is give us a call, and that's the call I got from Ms. Erst, excuse me.
Jeanette. Twenty-five years old.
She did call me, and you know, with concerns, you know, I understand, I totally can appreciate her concerns, Mr. and Mrs. Hahn, lived there longer than I have, unless you count when I moved there in nineteen fifty-seven, lived there until nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy, and then moved away and then come back and agree. It got almost happened. But, you know, we truly understand, and please, if you hear something, call us, let us know, we will give you the best answer we can possibly give you.
But we're not hearing anything, not what's like...
And Beth, I understand your concern, you're hearing all these things are happening, and we are planning to go forward. We are planning, you know, I've heard that this road's never going to happen, we haven't spoke to anyone, and, you know, we have this problem, that problem, but there are problems at any time that you take such a major destruction job on, and I truly believe that this will be good for our community, and I support what, which I was part of the committee, I support what the TIFF board here is doing, we're trying to achieve, stabilize the tax base in city Greensburg, create jobs, develop our available land, and that is probably right now, the most feasible area to develop. So I appreciate your time, and so anybody has some questions, we will do our best to accommodate an answer. Thank you.
If you can, if we're here, if this three phases, if you see the TIFF revenue to sundown, make sure it's finished. If there is revenue projected based on what we're getting right now, and the commitment was, is we're not going to have that in Carver, we have enough local money to...
Take a project.
It would just be nice to get some of our federal, interstate, tenth dollars back.
Did everybody here recall that? The reason we broke it into three phases is so that it's economically feasible to do it that way. We should be able to do, and all of this, we've done economic projections as to the revenue that we're going to get in off of TIFF this year by year. Those projections indicate with a safety margin built in, that we can fund this, doing it in phases. Now, that said, we're going to need to borrow some money until all that money gets in, but we're going to, we're going to do it in bites, so that we can do the first phase, second phase, third phase, but it will be completed. We have, we've got, according to the projections we've got, we've got the finances to finish the project. It's just that we're not, it's not going to be a bridge to no place. There is an end in sight on it, we know, we know what the intention is on it, okay? So just, I guess I would, if I was in your shoes too, I'd be concerned that you're going to build a road that's going to stop in my front yard, that it's not going to work. That's, that not going to happen. We've got, as Rick said, we've got financing to, to cover it. We just, we're just so early in the process, and I guess one of my concerns, and I was thinking about it when Gary was talking, is as this goes on, there are going to probably be more and more rumors of what's going to happen, what's going on with it. Please call, call the city, call Gary, call the mayor, call myself, the rumors will hurt more than anything. We'll just give it to these people. Tell people I'm not smart enough to lie. Do you want to remember what I said? Any other comments? Let me, let me go with the TIFF, just the financing, that's just a second, and the mayor alluded to it too. We can only use the funds that are generated from the TIFF area to help develop the TIFF area, and the infrastructure around that area. It's not like we can take money that's generated in the TIFF area and use it on the other side of town for the project. It's got to stay within the designated TIFF area, so, just so people understand that. Ken, can you come?
Ken Whitaker. President, here it is. First of all, I'd just, I'd like to thank the TIFF board for looking at and moving forward with the development project for the infrastructure for the city, for some of the concerns from some of the other citizens. You know, I've, as you guys all are aware, I've, I've spent a considerable amount of money over the past thirteen years of my life on the west side of Greensburg, to develop as, as much as I could, to bring as many things to the city, to help the city. There are dozens of new homes in the, probably close to a couple hundred total between both sides of the highway, several businesses that would not be there to utilize if it wasn't for investments that myself and some other folks made with me in wanting to grow the city, and, you know, it's, it's, it's also, it's the job I chose to do, it's what living I chose to make, and to provide food, shelter, and education for my children. There's a list of businesses, Napoleon Bank, Dr. Eversol's Facility, Family Dental, E C Row, New Church, and King Auto Body, there are tons of things that are there because of what was done. This will only enhance that, this project, it will, it will further develop the west side to be a, a location, I think, basically southeastern Indiana, that the other retailers and chains of retail, whether it be food, hospitality, retail goods, will definitely want to be, if this is done. I own a large portion of the ground, as you know, that I've committed to donate to this project, and in doing so, it is to, to help the growth of the city, to actually be a better place for everybody in the city, and have more options and amenities for everybody in the city, not just the people of all that neighborhood, not just me, or whatever, it's... So I guess on the, on the positive side, from my point of view, is I, I, I'm pleased that you guys are taking a look at it and, and trying to figure a way to get it done. The truth of the matter is, as I said before, I own a large portion of that ground. If you have to wait on my ability to do all of that, it wouldn't be a long time, it's not, it's not feasible. Thanks again, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or comments? Then I think we can ask for a motion to close the conference meeting. All those implicit obligations, aye? There's a... Thank you, thank you. Now, we need to reopen our original meeting, the regular meeting. We've got a couple of things to cover here, we have some invoices to be paid. Bridget, are you still here? Bridget has volunteered to help us understand the spreadsheet a little bit, the finances, our few members, et cetera, I appreciate that.
Does everybody have copy of the extra, is it... Yeah. Goodbye to the public, we've got extra notes here. Last year, when I came on board, as clerk treasurer, we were asked to put a spreadsheet together of finances for the TIFF board and the construction phases of the funds that we help manage, just a two-cent version of my spreadsheet, it's very basic and very easy to read. Right now, we are just, after last year closing out the construction fund, we're just using the Fund 802 TIFF funds. Currently, that first column is your May, June, and July, expenses, income, interest, and your year-to-date totals are at the bottom. That one that says year-to-date fund totals is what actually will be balanced with the bank as of end of July, and then your other balance will be based on the claims if you include those tonight. The ones that don't have a date or a check number behind them, those are the ones that you've got presented, Ken has those for presentation tonight. Like I said, I know there was a couple of new members on board, so I thought maybe I would, it's been probably six months or so since I've been to a meeting, so I thought I would just come and make sure that nobody has any questions.
Very easy to follow, very easy to read.
Yeah.
And we try to keep it, like, up to date, so that's why, I mean, like, when you come to the meeting, that's everything. If you pay all your claims that are presented to you that evening, then you know what your fund balance is at the end of that evening, and then when we get the approved claims, myself and my staff write the checks, get those out, and then we bounce a checkbook again, and have it ready for the next meeting. So this is kind of a little rotation there that we do each month, with, with some other things, but, you know, all the fun stuff. Anybody else?
Very, very clear, yes.
Okay, well, I will continue to do that. We did finally get some more user-friendly software, but I've not found the report that I like yet, that, that makes it user-friendly for me, because we've only had it for a couple of weeks, so maybe I might throw another report at you in a week or two and see if you like that one better, and if not, we'll stick with this one, we'll just keep moving forward, but that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
I do have a question, because since this is my second meeting...
You go right ahead, yes.
The Fund 803, I see that it's balanced out, was that, and it has construction, was that what the remaining payout was for the...
Yeah, they had moved funds over from the 802 into the 803 for construction costs, that was like to, like, change orders, things like that, that were, were going on.
So it's, it's got a zero balance now, but the fund is still there, so that...
We left it open, it's still there for any future projects, so if we need to move money back over into it, and it was just another way to keep, help keep a separate tally of what you're spending in construction fees and funds versus just everyday...
That's what I wanted to make sure, because in the event that this project does move forward, it'd be nice to have that in a separate bunch, so that we can track that separately.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's why I'm here.
As long as it's staying open and it's there, that's great.
Yeah, once you create a fund, it doesn't go away. There's some kind of act of God that I haven't found out about yet, to get rid of them, they're all there, even from probably the nineteen seventies, I think, so.
Wonderful.
Okay.
The N dot claim, is that where they're paying back? Typically, when the money's going in, it's interest and it's tax payments, but there's forty-one thousand dollars...
Oh, one of the older ones, I don't, I think I just did a...
Is that a claim to Lincoln Street?
It would have been a reimbursement, it would have been a reimbursement from Lincoln Street. It's not on the current printout you have yet, it would have been on one of the older ones, because if I print out the whole two years, it gets a little lengthy, but I usually try to condense it for the last couple of months, but I can give you a full report.
Oh, it's got the one I printed out.
Yeah, it would have been like clean voucher twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five. Yeah, those were all reimbursed.
Money's coming back from N-DOT, really.
Yeah.
Are we anticipating more? Is that the end of it?
Yeah, I thought twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah, there wasn't, I don't know.
So going forward, what we're...
I haven't received anything else for Ken to sign off on reimbursements.
So going forward, we'll see the interest and we'll see the tax.
Yeah.
This year, we took in about eight-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two in tax money.
Yeah, um, yeah, just for your June distribution, you've got about four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, give or take a few cents there, in your tax distributions, and you should see that about that same amount in the fall.
How much does that fluctuate?
It depends on if everyone pays. The way your board is, or the way the redevelopment commission is currently set up, you only collect that money if it's paid, you don't automatically collect it because it's in your area, those taxes in that area have to be paid to the county treasurer before they disperse them out to the TIF board.
Historically, I think we've stayed between about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand and about four-hundred-and-eighty, four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand.
Yeah, and every time when unballed, I know that was something that we talked about via a couple of emails, whenever unballed each year, as your consultant goes in, takes a look at all the parcels, they make sure that they've captured all the assessed valuation from those parcels, whether they went up or they went down, so you're always gonna have some fluctuation, but that's what that based neutralization report is, that they were talking about.
That was that Excel sheet that you sent us.
Uh, yeah, there was a billing, yeah, you have a billing for unballed.
The gross and the assessed, and that's great.
Yeah, unballed prepares that for you guys every year, so you'll have another one coming probably in the near future.
Go back to the weight and find out whether or not they do a good job. I've got the O8s here.
You got the O8 one there? Are you gonna, are you gonna have one of those?
I'll have a binder, yeah.
Yeah, well, you're, I think Doug's the president on that.
He, he, he was the best at it.
He was. I, I think he probably has a permanent arms spanner carrying that back and forth to TIF.
It's just interesting to see how accurate they are.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's definitely...
If you rely on going forward, it'd be nice to know if they actually nailed it to that.